Actually doing rapid flu testing as well.
Okay. Well, thank you all again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Santos. All right, we will consider and take action on Agenda Items Four through Forty. Number Four is Proclamation Twenty-two dash one zero one six, declaring September the seventeenth through the twenty-third is Twenty-two as Constitution Week.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded in discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carries.
I'd like to see lots of D A R members here, so.
Y'all come up and we'll read the proclamation and maybe take a few pictures. Whereas, September the seventeenth, twenty-twenty-two marks the two-hundred-and-thirty-fifth anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution for the United States of America by the Constitution Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorial anniversary to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasions, and whereas Public Law Nine-Fifteen guarantees the issuing of proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September seventeenth through the twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two, as a Constitution Week. Now therefore be proclaimed that Brazos County Commissioners Court does hereby proclaim the week of September seventeenth through the twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two, as Constitution Week, and urges our citizens to reaffirm the ideals which the framers of the Constitution had in seventeen-eighty-seven by diligently protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained, and express gratitude for the privilege of being an American in a republic which functions under the oldest constitution still active used today, proclaim the twentieth September, twenty-twenty-two.
On behalf of loving and tutored the daughters of the American Revolution, we'd like to extend our thanks, of course, to the court, and also to everyone here present. You have just lived our Constitution this morning. Everything that we have done today is contained in this document from seventeen-eighty-seven, and it is a beautiful expression of our republic, our democracy, and the way that we conduct our business and the rights that we have under this great document. Thank you very much, Court.
Thank you.
Yes. Come on down, please. Come on down.
Come on down.
Come on down. We want to get you all in, though. Thank you. Thank you all for what you do.
Thank you.
We appreciate you so much.
Thank you.
Gotcha. And thank you. Lenora. Thank you.
Well, I'm here. At least you have one representation of the sons of the American Revolution here. Okay, number five is approval to cancel the regular meeting of Commissioners Court on Tuesday, October fourth, due to lack of a quorum. Members of the court will be attending the conference.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion made seconded in discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number Six is an order adopting tax rate point five-point-three-one percent at the local provider participation fund for fiscal year twenty-twenty-three, designating PNC Bank as of the LPPF, and I think we need to.
To pull that.
Pull that one, is that correct?
No.
We'll put it on next week's agenda. We'll make a few adjustments in there.
Need a motion to pull?
Yeah.
Motion to pull.
Second.
Motion made seconded in discussion. All in favor say aye.
Question. I'm not familiar with the parliamentary procedure of moving to pull something. We can table it, or we can move to defer action.
We'll move to defer action.
If you make a motion to defer action, you have to establish the date upon which this will be taken up again.
Here's Nina, and she'll give us our date. The calendar has that.
September twenty-seventh.
The next Commissioners Court date will be on September twenty-seventh at ten o'clock. If we could add that agenda, I'll add that agenda item to that one as well.
Very well. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, so we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
So the number you should understand, the motion is to defer action.
To September twenty-seventh.
Okay. As long as that's the motion, then I'm good.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number Seven is approval of the order dividing election precinct fifty-four and combining with election precinct fifty-nine due to Bryan ISD redistrict.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made seconded in discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number Eight is considering and discuss the MSC as possible early polling location beginning at twenty-twenty-three, and we had a number that spoke already, but I'm gonna go back through the list of people, and if you didn't speak, I'll give you the opportunity now to come up and speak.
She spoke.
Yes. Ashika Shaw?
Shaw.
Did you speak? Okay. Christina Samuel?
I think there's a misunderstanding.
Okay, must have been.
I think your name is?
Okay, Chris, you're Christina Samuel.
She has stepped in the hall.
Okay.
There she is.
No worries. Here she comes. You can go after me. All right, good morning. Before I begin, can I just ask if I have a time limit at all?
Time limit?
Do I have a time limit?
Four minutes.
Yeah, four minutes.
Four minutes.
Time limit.
Actually, that's up to you, Judge, since this isn't a public comment section. We're in the actual.
Yeah, but I think four minutes.
Three minutes.
Three.
Yep. Okay, so why don't we limit it to three minutes? We, and we're limiting it to no more than ten. And I, just a question, are you a registered voter in Brazos County?
Of course.
Okay.
I am also VDVVR certified, so I'm able to register others to vote as well.
Okay.
As a number of the students here are, in addition. I do want to ask, I believe the request for the agenda item was supposed to be regarding the twenty-twenty-two elections, but I believe this is going to be voting for twenty-twenty-three. Can I clarify that?
I was given bad information. I actually asked that this be put on the agenda, and I was told at that time that we could not make a change for twenty-two.
Right.
I understand now that that is incorrect.
It's extremely.
Another bit of misinformation that was passed on to me was that if we had one voting location in the precincts, that we had, we could only have one.
Yeah.
Or the other ones had to add. I've, I've been given information now from the Texas Civil Rights Project. They, they actually sent me some information, and it is clear to me that you could have two in one precinct, however, you couldn't have more than that unless we added in other precincts. So what I'm telling you is, yes, it is on the agenda as a discussion for twenty-twenty-three. I would love to know, I would love to ask the court, why we made the decision to do this in twenty-twenty-two. I, I can tell you, I'm the lone person that voted against it, but I think after reconsideration and after the, the outpouring of support, I, I would like to reconsider twenty-twenty-two also, but I'd have to do that on a different agenda. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Is there no way to amend it for today's agenda?
No, it's just posted as discussion.
Okay, well, I just want to say on the record that that is extremely upsetting to hear because it takes a lot for us to come out here every Tuesday, given our schedules and us being students, but given that we care about this, I will probably be returning to make sure that we can have this done for this year, but obviously, twenty-twenty-three and those future years are going to be just as important, so I'll speak my piece, but just know that my testimony will be regarding a lot of information for being in support of this year, so. With that, hello, my name is Christina Samuel. I am a Senior Biology Honors major at Texas A&amp;M, and I am also a student organizer, being the president and founder of the Move Texas chapter here A&amp;M, aiming to empower young people to be civically engaged, especially in their state and local elections. The last time I was able to speak here, I was told by numerous individuals that I wasn't dressed properly. It is unfortunate to me that me coming, as I am, as a student, concerned about her community, but making an effort to still come here between classes after my eight AM and going to class right after this. It's unfortunate that that was somehow distracting from y'all, that y'all couldn't just hear to the content of what I'm speaking, but I hope that you guys are able to pay special attention to that today. That same inconvenience it is for me to not only come to a meeting at ten AM on a Tuesday is the same inconvenience that countless of Texas A&amp;M students and faculty will face trying to vote in City Hall in these upcoming elections. I'm here to urge the court today to reinstate the MSC as an early voting location for the twenty-twenty-two midterm elections. According to Section eighty-five-point-zero-six-seven of the Texas Election State Code, the schedule shall be posted continuously for a period beginning no later than the fifth day before the first day of the period for early voting, by personal appearance and ending on the last day of the period. The schedule may be amended after the beginning of early voting by personal appearance to include the notice of an additional temporary branch polling place, location, date, hours, but any amendment must be made no later than the fifth day before the date the voting is scheduled to begin at the additional temporary branch. There's a lot of legal jargon, but this means that we have until mid-October to make any changes to polling locations for this election season. All the talk about this being impossible or even inconvenient is wrong. This has been told to me by multiple commissioners, which I appreciate, Mr. Ford, that you clarified that, of your misinformation, but this has been told to me by commissioners and county affiliates with full confidence. You should be ashamed that as county commissioners and affiliates, that you don't even know the law that you're responsible for abiding by. Not only is the reversal of the MSC completely illegal, but is very doable. The ballots for the precinct locations have not been printed yet, as far as my knowledge is. Other counties amend their voting locations far past August and as needed. I'm sure that if this is merely an excuse, I'm not sure if this is merely an excuse to mask a reason we have not been told, but at this point, myself and a lot of people here today are completely fed up. We had to do our own research in order to argue for our basic entitled civic right. Instead of taking responsibility for it, we have been cited as the lazy ones because we don't want to walk or because of our low voter turnout, and this decision will only make it lower. If you have. If you have any compassion for the younger generations, you'll vote to reinstate the MSC. Thank you very much.
Ashika Shaw?
Shaw.
Did she speak?
Ashika Shaw.
And I do want to say that I just will be upcoming to you today. We have three to five minutes, so I apologize if my testimony isn't timed to perfection, but. Good morning. Oh, wait, actually, let me grab my testimony slides. Thank you very much. I just came here with my marketing material because I'm a student entrepreneur. Good morning. My name is Ishika Shaw, and I'm a senior marketing major at Texas A&amp;M University advocating for the MSC to be reinstated as an early voting poll. I'm a student entrepreneur with an eyebrow threading business which I've been operating in College Station for the past three years. I spent a lot of time understanding the market to strategize how I can grow my business, and this year I concluded that I would have to offer on-campus threading if I wanted my business to grow. This is not because there isn't a demand for threading, it's because for the TAMI student market, off-campus locations are not only not accessible for everyone, but they're not convenient for anyone. College students don't have a typical nine-to-five schedule. We have classes all day and hours of homework, so budgeting time for any task is extremely difficult. I live a two-minute drive from City Hall, so I'm what you would consider close to campus, but I know how traffic in College Station is, so I have to budget at least forty minutes for my commute to school. I tried to drive to City Hall from campus, and the logistics of getting from, to my on-campus parking spot and getting to City Hall through campus traffic requires at least two hours round trip, and that doesn't even account for the time it takes me to wait in line at the polls, or drive around Lot One Hundred looking for a parking spot, or walk to class from my parking spot, not to mention the obvious issue that is City Hall parking, because if Lot One Hundred has five-hundred-and-sixty-seven spots and still can't accommodate the fraction of the students that have a parking pass for that lot, I don't know how City Hall is going to accommodate the entirety of Precinct Three's voter population. When I introduced on-campus threading this year, my first day threading at the MSC, I had four bookings, which is the most bookings I've had in one day in all three years of running my business. Most of my on-campus customers are freshmen, which is not a surprise because I didn't have a car freshman year, so I know how difficult it is to get around Aggieland, especially when you're still figuring out the bus system. To see what the commute would be like, for the large population of students that attend Texas A&amp;M and don't have a car, I try to take the bus, and it took me an hour to get there. That does not even take into account the fact that I had to walk twelve minutes from the nearest bus stop in lightning and pouring rain, and I didn't have a choice but to keep going because there were no nearby buildings that I could take shelter in. There's no reason voting should be that difficult for anyone, especially not the eighteen-year-old freshman that will be voting for the first time this election season. Commissioner Colley, you told us last week that you'd be voting against the MSC because it takes, it took you forty minutes to get to a location on campus. Well, I checked that all the other early voting locations are within a twenty-minute drive of City Hall, so if non-on-campus voters find the on-campus inconvenient, I suggest that you ask them to go to other early voting polls rather than asking our student population and on-campus population to figure out how they're going to get the polls despite so many of us having classes throughout the day and not having motor transportation to the polls. If the argument for City Hall is that it makes voting easier for voters, that is a blatant disregard for the largest population of voters you serve in Precinct Three. That includes students, faculty, and the thousands of constituents that will be inconvenienced by the logistical nightmare that will be early voting at City Hall. Tens of thousands of non-students figure out on-campus parking every Aggie football game day at Kyle Field. There's already infrastructure in place to get people to the polls. I apologize for running over, but the consequences of removing the early voting poll from the MSC are that the vote will be suppressed. All right, well, thank you for your time. I appreciate, I appreciate it.
And my quote was not forty-five minutes, it was an hour and a half. I was trying to, it was forty-five minutes to make a turn, and then.
And that is our experience leaving campus. The thousands of us that do rely on.
Bianca Avery?
I am going to try to skip some of the points that have already been brought up. Also, thank you, Commissioner Ford, because they brought up one of the points that I was going to clarify, so. I, my name is Bianca Avery. I am the Texas State Coordinator for Fair Election Centers Campus Vote Project, and I'm here as an alum because I am part of the Fighting Texas Aggie Class of two thousand and four, so. Didn't want to do it in the mic. Thank you all. So I am here on a, to urge the Commissioners Court to adapt and amend the early voting plan that will designate the MSC back to being a voting site. I'm aware we're talking about twenty-twenty-three, I'm hoping also when it's re-discussed for twenty-twenty-two. Unfortunately, student voters continue to struggle for equal access to the ballot, and one of the points I did want to highlight is, the Twenty-Sixth Amendment actually prohibits distinguishing student voters as like separate from other voters, which was something that was referred to in a news story by administrator referring to normal voters versus our on-campus voters. We cannot do that. The federal courts have repeatedly struck down any election administration practices that treat young voters differently from our other residents. Furthermore, some of the reasons cited for moving the voting place kind of in fact favor having an on-campus location, there were large numbers of people, students, staff, faculty, that were served both in twenty-twenty and Administrator Hancock themselves stated that turnout at the MSC was more than expected in the earlier primary for twenty-twenty-two, meaning that site is well-used, and to move to a smaller site, that some of the reasons were said about parking and size, it kind of doesn't match that kind of logic. An MSC early voting site will serve a substantial number of voters, including students, but not only students. Any confusion non-student voters may experience in locating MSC can be mitigated through proper signage and official pre-election communications. County officials have said that students can vote at any early voting location and stated some of the reasons about navigating campus, but the same remains true of any non-student voters. If the MSC is a problem, or it's packed, or it's busy, and you have the ability, the blessing, the ability to use transportation, there are other options as well that people can go to if they find the MSC to be inconvenient. Again, for being a student here, I was like, we figured it out for the football games. I know we can figure this out for something as important as voting. So the voting plans should be structured to include all voters in the county. The decision to remove early voting centers for MSC perpetuates additional barriers for student voters and the thousands upon thousands of faculty and staff that serve and work there so diligently. Voting is a hard-earned freedom and a duty, and civic institutions should work to involve voters in the democratic process as soon as they are eligible. So for these reasons, I'm hoping, I am pleading that the Commissioners Court adopt a new plan that will reinstate the MSC as a voting location. Thank you so much for your time today.
Thank you. Thank you for coming in. Fran Thielman? Utah, okay. Trey Watson?
Hello, how are y'all?
Good.
All right, I'm Trey Watson, president of Young Dills BCS. I also serve on the Brazos Valley African-American Museum Board and the Historical Preservation Committee for the City of College Station, so I'm a pretty active member of this community. I'm a fourth-generation College Station resident and have rarely been on the A&amp;M campus. I'm speaking as a community member, and I agree, and I agree that the MSC should be kept as a polling place, not only for twenty-twenty-three, like the agenda is stating, but for this upcoming election in twenty-twenty-two as well. This is definitely a form of voter suppression, regardless of y'all think, think as, as that way or not, and should have never been approved in the first place. Bryan College Station are both growing cities, but they are still not big enough for people who live in Precinct Three to complain and have to drive to any of the other precincts to vote. City Hall has no bus route from my understanding, so that already eliminates a good percentage of students to have the access to vote. Everyone who plans to drive to City Hall to vote can just as well drive to College Station Utilities Meeting and Training Facility or Gallaudet Baptist Church. MSC, the MSC has been the home of early voting for faculty and students for many years. I don't believe the reasons that were reported are accurate enough for the polling places to be switched. I'm asking y'all, as a College Station Precinct Three resident, to reinstate the MSC for the year twenty-twenty-two and beyond to be Precinct Three Early Voting Center. Thank y'all.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Alvord? Okay. Is that?
Mike.
Mike Sutherland? Is he here? Mike, oh, there you are. I hadn't seen you in here.
Yes, Judge, I'm here, Mike Sutherland, and y'all didn't talk about Commissioners Berry's election to Blinn College Board. She ought to be an expert on this children operation. I'm here to support the students. If, if there's any group of people that understand what's going on, it's these students. When you're doing testing, you find the user of your product and ask them what's wrong with it, and they've been telling you, and this is one of the smartest groups, groups of people I've ever met in my life, and it reminds me, you're here because of them. The students at A&amp;M, fun, they're like the, some people say chicken, it's like the goose that laid the golden egg. You got to take care of them. You got to make sure that they are accommodated in every way possible. We do it as citizens. I've, I fixed kids' cars during the time I was, I've, I've been here, and the businesses strive, if you look at Texas A&amp;M, I mean, University Drive, the businesses strive to be close, near, and convenient for them, so they can take care of them in a, in a much easier way, so they're accommodated in every way as students except when we come to this. As a matter of fact, I submitted a recommendation on how to avoid these problems in electing polling places. I hadn't seen it on the agenda yet, but it's a good, it's a good recommendation. And so I get a picture of what's happening, is that, like you go to the A&amp;M football game, there's a hundred thousand people there, A&amp;M's got a hundred thousand people that are on campus, just, I guess, I don't know if it's every day, but during the week, they all got a hundred thousand got to be there. So what you're saying is, let's go to the football game, and when you get to the football game, you say, oh, we're playing at Bryan High, not at A&amp;M. So you got to accommodate, that's a logistics nightmare. You're, you're, you're burning more gas, you're causing environmental problems, there's all kinds of issues associated with that, and that's what they're saying. So I think some of the barriers y'all talked about before was staffing, because we're old people like me, staff the polling places. Look at the kids here, they can do that too. You may have to have two of them to staff one place, but there's plenty of them that want a little extra money. And then the money, I just looked at page ten of the budget, and there's three-hundred-and-seventy-seven million dollars there that's not committed right now. What does a polling place cost? A hundred and fifty thousand? So the MSC is a critical place, not only for them to vote like they've been talking about, but it's a critical way for us to show how much we appreciate what they do for the community. Without them, you wouldn't have a job. That's the problem. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Judy, Judy Leonis.
Judge, Commissioners, Judy Leonis, and I am a citizen of the county, but I've also lived in Bryan College Station for fifty years. I want to address the students first. Thanks for coming. I'm a former student. I am very proud of y'all. I, I apologize as a citizen for fifty years, and all of these people up here are my friends. We don't all agree, but they're my friends, and I apologize that they criticized the way you looked and that they misled you about what we were going to be talking about today. We were also misled. So with that said. I taught fifth grade, as most of you know, and one of my most fun units with the kids that they loved was the election unit, and everybody got to vote, they all got to run for office, all of these things, because you know I want them all to eventually run for office, and even though I didn't teach the Ford, the Aldrich, and the Colley kids, I knew them when they were little. I've met the other two Commissioners' kids, and you have, you have fine, wonderful families. Fast forward to today, where young voters, among others, who work in A&amp;M, are having their votes suppressed by four of our Commissioners, who all have children, though now grown and successful. I fully believe each person in front of me today, my friends, would be standing here for their own children who were eighteen-plus to have a convenient place to vote. I helped register students last week on campus, in just a few hours, without, sadly, without this being advertised, we registered seventy-seven kids. They were so excited, and this is nonpartisan, they were so excited they couldn't wait to vote. I didn't have the heart to tell most of them, you're not going to get to vote here, because I thought this was a different kind of meeting today. How many people here are in favor of switching to the MSC? Thank you. Sorry y'all didn't get to speak. By the way, young man over here, we were told when we came in we'd have four minutes. As a senior and volunteer who delivers lunches to every polling place during elections, I see the makeup of who is standing in line to vote, and seniors, unless professors or staff, do not vote at A&amp;M. They usually vote at College Station Utilities Building or another location they choose. So this is a fallacy to say that seniors such as me will not go onto campus to vote because, and that's the most convenient, it is not convenient. Thanks for your time and service, but this was a wrong decision. You're still my friends, but this was a wrong decision, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. That was the last that I had to fill out a form. I don't believe I've got a form for you, but if you want to.
There's one young man.
Good morning, Commissioners. I am Jackson Bailey, a freshman at Texas A&amp;M University. I'm here to represent not only myself, but also my friends and one of the many speaking here about the needs of the student body. I'm asking you to reinstate the MSC at Texas A&amp;M as an early voting location for this upcoming twenty-twenty-two election cycle. I became eligible to vote at the end of last year and voted. I became eligible to vote at the end of last year and voted in the primary in February. This will be my first midterm election, and my past experience in the primary this year were quick and straightforward. Last year, I took dual credit classes at my community college, and a polling location was available. Without this location, it would be a challenge to find the time to vote, even with many other sites available, since I had schoolwork, work, and lived about 30 minutes from the other nearest polling location. Here, I will live, work, and learn in Brazos County for a minimum of four years. I am going to consider myself a resident and part of this community. It's for this reason that I'm currently in the process of filling out the paperwork for becoming a voter in this county. This year, I have even less time available than before. I'm working on school for nearly all hours of day and night, spending a little time with my friends, and working in childcare at my church in the spare time. I will not have time in my schedule to find time to go to City Hall and vote, especially considering the voting times the City Hall will be open. I also mention that I'm here representing my friends. Most of them don't have cars available to drive to City Hall. And since there's no easy way to get, for us to get there without a vehicle, I've been their primary form of transportation whenever we've been going off campus. This will significantly impact us if we wish to go and vote in early voting. For first-year students, who will be most likely voting for their first time, plus the considerable change from high school to college, attempting to find the time to vote and then find a way to get to College Station City Hall is a huge ask. Most likely, if the freshmen do not vote in this election, they're extremely unlikely to continue voting in future elections. We're building our voting habits, and as one of my fellow citizens spoke before, how will first-time voters view this situation? We have over 100, we have over, I'm sorry, not 100,000, we have over 1,300 petition signers and over 80 faculty letters. There is plenty of support for this issue. Further, I've spoken to my fellow members at my church, and they've been appalled by this decision. Further, my boss in childcare there, her husband works at A&M and has relied on that polling location for a long time. Taking this away, well, I believe my time is just now up. Thank you all for your time and have a great rest of your day.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I believe that was 10, we were limited to 10 speakers on a particular subject, and we've done that. So, and I, I know there was Agenda Item says...
Discussion.
Just, yeah, consider and discuss. So...
I, I'd like to say, or I'd like to thank the students for coming out this week and last week, and I've heard you loud and clear. And I think this year, it's too late to change it, even though I know legally, we probably can, but the county is not the only entity that's holding an election. Both cities, both school districts, and our emergency districts are holding elections, and I don't think there's enough time. And we have an election official here who could probably speak to that.
I'm sorry, Trudy's not here, but I did want to remind you, the MOVE Act, federal MOVE Act, military ballots have to be mailed out by Friday, or we will not be in compliance with that federal law. So I understand the LNA test has already been done, the database has been locked, so if they change anything, they have to repost, they have to redo the LNA test, and I don't know that they could get the ballots out to be in compliance with the MOVE Act for our military.
Okay, I don't understand how a military ballot has an impact on voting locations.
Let's, uh... The locations are built into the database, so if you change the database, that requires a new test, which means tho, those ballots, the program gets, let's see if I can explain it. It's for security. If you change that program, that program is null and valid. You have to redo the program and redo the ballots. You can't have two databases, one for federal and one for everybody else.
Well, let's try and change it today.
Well, even if you did it, you still have to post notice for 48 out, 48 hours. You still have to do the LNA, and you have to have them ready to go by Friday.
How do other counties change?
It may be an emergency.
Can you take your question from the audience? You'll have to cover if we're gonna...
But since Trudy's not here, I just wanted to remind you of the MOVE Act, which is 45 days for military.
Crystal's here.
Yeah. So, so if I understand correctly...
Crystal?
Crystal, would you just speak to the...
Yes. I can help. Crystal's an election official. I'm the elections coordinator for Brazos County. We have done the LNA testing, which has to be posted 48 hours before, so all of our entities can make their way to our office and do the LNA testing. So we won't be able to do that. FPCA ballots have to be emailed out by Friday. I have over 150 of those to get out. These are also students at A&M, but there's an offshore, something going on offshore, and I gotta get those out for those voters and those that need to be voted, who needs that time to get their ballot back to me. So no, there's no way possible for us to do that timely and us be in compliance with the state law on that.
Well, I should have the...
I'm sorry, we don't allow people to address this on the podium.
Now, I think that some are confused with using an emergency voting location, but that's something totally different.
Let's close this.
Okay.
Again, may I say that I have been very impressed, and I'm honored to have met many of the students that have addressed the issue. I do not want you to think that this is your last chance. We're here every Tuesday with a few exceptions, and we want to hear from our constituents. Even though we don't agree maybe on everything, the four, five of us here, it's good to discuss. It's good to hear your opponents. And contrary to what one speaker alluded to, the five of us are not, hmm, we are not the, we're not the sole source of the information that's passed out. We have, we rely on legal minds, we rely on our county clerk, our district clerk, and all staff of Brazos County. They supply us. Now, if we're not clear on something, we do try to clarify. So because of human error, we may make mistakes. However, we are quickly attempting to rectify and to learn and to address all of the concerns. And we appreciate hearing from you. This is not we against you, or, it's not like that. It's a discussion where we all hopefully will respect one another's points of view, and we will leave here a better community and not fractured because we don't all agree.
Well, with all due respect, since I have the election code, under Section 43.061, Section B, if the location of a polling place changes after notice of an election is given under Section 4.003, the county clerk shall give notice...
Let me, let me cut you off. You've already spoke, and...
Well, you guys, first of all, didn't give the full amount of time. Second of all, you're citing wrong information, so I have to bring up the election code in order to...
Well, we don't need to address that here.
I don't think mistakes with our inalienable right to vote and to cast the ballot and disenfranchise us is okay mistake to make.
This discussion's over with.
Well, I can't say I appreciate your time.
We're gonna move on to the next item.
Judge, I as one Commissioner feel that we made a mistake on this issue, and I am very interested if there's some way that the Commissioners Court could vote again to allow us to correct...
It would have to be posted again.
Yeah.
And I'm willing to do that, Commissioner. I'm, we're perfectly fine.
We don't have, we don't have the time.
Judge Peters, Commissioners, if I may, quickly...
We have to, we have to stay with what is available, and the public comment on Agenda Item number eight has passed, and I, I apologize for that, but these are issues that came up.
Well, I respect that, Commissioner Aldrich, but if I may say very quickly, these students...
Well, you know you don't respect that because you are continuing to violate what we've established as the protocol for the meeting.
Sir, these students are putting, are putting their, are putting their classes at risk. I, I think that maybe I can recognize what they are sacrificing because I am a more recent graduate, but they, they cannot come every Tuesday.
This discussion is over, and we're fixing to move on to the next Agenda item. Thank you for coming.
Well, we still have opened the Agenda item to discuss this, and what I, I will just say this. When we voted on this the first time, I deferred to the judgment of the Precinct Three Commissioner. I don't like to have another Commissioner tell me what does or does not need to happen in my precinct, and I thought that that was the right way to approach this. After the public input that I've heard, I'm certainly aware of the fact that maybe we should have given this more consideration. And I also want to point out, on behalf of the people who have talked here, is, is in the election code, Section 85.062, it says that "may not exceed," is the language that's used there. And what that would say is, is you cannot exceed more than two times the amount of another precinct for early voting. That is not what we were told. What we were told was that if we had one early voting location in one precinct, if we had two in one precinct, then we would have to have two in every precinct. And that's what we were told at the time of the meeting. So with that in mind, I think that we really need to address all the issues that would allow for early voting to be established in 2022 for this election coming up, if it can be done. And the reason I'm asking these questions is, is what we've been told is not necessarily what the truth was. And after, after having been informed of what those are, particularly with Section 85.062, if you go back and look at the record, we were told that you had to have two in every precinct. And that's not correct, and since that was not correct, then the assumptions that we made in being able to choose where early locations were, that was something that, you know, was erroneous, and that being the fact, we need to go back and look at this because it may be erroneous in interpretation from what we've heard from people relative to 2022's potential of elections. So I'd like to, I'd like to get the, I'd like to get the firm ruling on this as opposed to just saying, no, we can't, when there is evidence presented that maybe we can.
Commissioner?
Yeah.
It appears that it might, it might be that another workshop on the issue would be appropriate. You have mentioned that we have had misinformation, so let's work at getting the right information before it's all.
I've heard two views today, one that we, oh, excuse me, go ahead.
As I said, I appreciate the students coming, and I have heard you loud and clear, and I'm in favor of the MSC location for 2023. I think it's too late this year because we have not only our, the College Station City Council, College Station School District, our EMS, and Bryan City Council and Bryan School District. And so I'm in favor of going back to the MSC for '23, and, and I am sorry that I made the mistake when I did, and I apologize, but I think we need to move forward.
Commissioner, we, we've heard testimony, excuse me, go ahead.
No, please.
We've heard testimony that we can change it this year.
I'd like to...
And then we heard other testimony that we can't change it this year. So again, we've got misinformation.
Again, that's why I was asking that we put it on for a workshop where we, Commissioners...
I concur.
Can, can question...
I'll support that, and I'd like to publicly state that I think we should change it for 2022 also.
Well, that's on the record, but the thing is, we have to look at the laws and the procedures that preclude us. I know you're not satisfied with our answers, but we don't have control of everything. We don't have control of everything. Please hear me. We are restrained by law. We are trying to make adjustments. I think the workshop would allow us to properly discuss and question the sources that we have and bring experts. That's how we do business here. We don't, no one person knows everything. So we call on experts to come in, and even today, you had two different presentations. We learn from those that are supposed to be the experts. And if we were misinformed, we were misinformed, but we will get to the right information, and we hope to do the right thing. Give us a chance. Give us a chance.
We respect your right to come here, and I think you need to respect our process.
Yes.
And I think we have a long agenda, and I suggest we go on, but I'd also like to suggest maybe next Tuesday after court, we have a workshop on this.
For sure.
Commissioners, Judge, may I make one request that y'all examined when y'all had your private meeting?
We don't have any private meetings.
And the workshop is open to the public. The workshop is open to the public.
Are y'all gonna have any private meetings?
No.
No, we are not allowed to have private meetings unless it's posted.
We have a posted meeting for us to discuss.
No, we respect the Open Meetings Act, and unfortunately, you know, the perception is that there's something done behind or between meetings. That's not true for us. We can't answer for anybody else, but this court operates with, in the law.
Yep.
I'm not going to prison, I'm 72 years old.
I'm not either.
I love my community, but I'm not gonna give you any more time.
Yeah.
Okay. I, I think we've, we've certainly had discussion from more than 10, I believe, from the public. We've had discussion here on the court, and I think it's time to move on to the next item, and let's move on through the agenda. There's no action to be taken on Number Eight. Number Nine is approval of the following job description.
Move approval A.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none motion carries. Number Ten is approval for authorization of county justice to sign a consent transfer granting College Station Science Park LLC permission to transfer a portion of the property covered by the Economic Development Agreement dated December 14, 2015 pursuant to the terms of the agreement.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none motion carries. Number Eleven is approval of Chapter 381 Economic Development Agreement with Lawson Properties v. LLC.
Move approval?
Second. Motion made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none motion carries. Number Twelve is approval of interlocal, interlocal agreement with the reasonable ability to authority for fiscal and personal management.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none motion carries. Number Thirteen is approval of request from Constable Precinct Three to apply for bullet resistance shield, uh, shield grant.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none motion carries. Number Fourteen is approval requested from the Sheriff's Office to accept text dot FY23 Selective Traffic Enforcement Step Grant.
Move approval? Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none motion carries. Number Fifteen is approval requested from Sheriff's Office to apply for bullet resistance shield grant program FY2023 from the Office of the Governor, Department of Public Safety.
Move approval?
Second. Motion made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none motion carries. Number Sixteen is requesting approval for the following contracts, savings.
I move approval A and B.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none motion carries. Number Seventeen is approval of Amendment Number One, Renewal 223-056R, road sign and signpost for Brazos County with Vulcan signs.
Move approval? Second.
Motion made second to discussion. Most made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none motion carries. Number eighteen is request from Constable Precinct Three for the approval acceptance of eight hundred dollar monetary donation from Ranch Harley Davis.
Move approval?
Second.
Most made second to discussion.
I'd like to, to thank the ranch. I think they've done this, uh, on a couple of occasions.
Yes.
And we appreciate that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none motion carries. Number nineteen is request approval from Juvenile Services Department, uh, to grant an exception for section one point zero five policy nepotism.
Can I, uh, may I ask why, um, I don't see the department head? Oh.
There's link.
Can you address this? Nepotism is a, is an issue for me. Let me tell you about it. Those in power seem to stay in power because they hire relatives and I'm concerned about that.
Um, Commissioner, um, we, um, interviewed this person and because of experience and the addition they could make to our academy program, we felt very strongly that we would like to hire this person. And it will not cause any type of, I don't see any type of issue. The other person, the person they're related to works at our detention center. This is in a totally different section and they would never supervise each other. Actually, it looks like in the policy manual for the county, it states supervision of another person that you're related to. These two people would never supervise each, each other at all. And I felt strongly enough for this person because I've known this person for a long time. And I know that they have the experience needed and I feel like they would be a good, um, person to work with these kids.
Thank you, Ms. Ricketson. I appreciate your, your report.
Thank you.
Okay, um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Oh, I'll, I'll motion.
Move to approve?
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
None, uh, one, one in opposition, motion carries. Uh, number twenty is approval of the following community support contracts FY twenty twenty-three.
Move approval A through M?
Second.
Most made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none motion carries. Number twenty-one is MPO Fiscal and Personnel Management Agreement with Brazos County for the, uh, period October one, twenty twenty-two to September thirty, twenty twenty-five.
Move approval?
Second.
Most made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none motion carries. Number twenty-two is approval of amendment number one to Brazos County Purchasing Policy to change and add legislation certificates and to edit the credit card policy.
Move approval?
Second.
Most made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none motion carries. Number twenty-three is approval requested from Purchasing Department to declare a list of surplus property as salvage accordance with local government code two sixty-three point one fifty-two unauthorized destruction or other means of disposal of for items.
Move approval?
Second.
Most made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none motion carries. Number twenty-four is award of RFQ CIP twenty-two dash one twenty-four Professional Services Architect Recommended is Burdette Consultants LLC.
Move approval?
Second.
Most made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none motion carries. Number twenty-five is approval of agreement twenty-two dash one fifty-nine for arbitrage calculation with PFM Asset Management LLC.
Move approval?
Second.
Most made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none motion carries. Number twenty-six is approval contract twenty-two dash one sixty-one for long-term residential services of juvenile offenders with Senna Core Odyssey House.
Move approval?
Second.
Most made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none motion carries. Number twenty-seven is award of RFQ CIP twenty-two dash five fifteen courthouse security enhancement recommended towards Agland Construction.
Move approval?
Second.
Most made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none motion carries. Number twenty-eight is award of RFQ CIP twenty-two dash six twenty-four Architect for Brazos County Road and Bridge and Heavy Fleet Building Recommended Award is Powers Brown Architecture.
Move approval?
Second.
Most made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none motion carries. Number twenty-nine is award of bid twenty-three dash zero one three Fire Alarm Monitoring Recommended Award is Herman Alarms LLC.
Move approval?
Second. Most made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none motion carries. Number thirty is permission to advertise for bid for twenty-three dash zero two zero Fire Alarm Smoke Detector Inspections.
Move approval?
Second. Most made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none motion carries. Number thirty-one is permission to advertise for bid twenty-three dash zero five seven Various Aggregates Coal Mix and Other Road Materials.
Move approval?
Second.
Most made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none motion carries. Number twen- thirty-two is renewal of contract twenty-three dash zero six two R with gender on Thibodeau for legal representation for indigent juveniles.
Move approval?
Second.
Most made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none motion carries. I don't know, Patrick, I see you sitting there. I didn't know whether you wanted to have anything to say.
Real brief then, I know it's already you.
Yeah.
Judge, Commissioners, Lane Thibodeau and I are honored to continue to represent the, the youth in our community and juvenile court. And, uh, I'd like to say that we've done that for now twenty-two years. This will be twenty-two years. And, uh, during that timeframe, I'm pleased to say that in the half dozen times that the Commissioners Court has approved our contract, it's been done so unanimously every time, uh, going back to the times, Judge, when you first got on the court and, uh, when Mr. Colley preceded Mrs. Colley and before all the other commissioners there. So, uh, back to the time when Al Jones was our county judge and the Randy Sims. So we're pleased to continue to work with Brazos County on behalf of the youth in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate the work.
Good job.
Thank you for the job y'all do. Uh, we voted on that, correct? I'm sure we did.
Yes.
Thirty-three is approval of final plat of Southern Point subdivision sections one fifteen and four oh one, uh, twenty point four eight acres. Stratt D Smith League Survey A dash two ten City College Station ETJ Brazos County Texas sites located precinct one.
Move approval?
Second.
Most made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none motion carries. Number thirty-four is approval of final plat for Heritage Lake Meadows fifteen point seven five seven acres Richardson Perry Circuit League A forty-four City of Brian ETJ Brazos County Texas sites located precinct two.
Move approval?
Second. Most made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none motion carries. Number thirty-five is tax refund application for the following.
Move approval A, B and C?
Second.
Most made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none motion carries. Number thirty-six is budget amendments, budget amendments FY twenty-one slash twenty-two forty-seven point zero one to forty-seven point zero two. And then budget amendments FY twenty-one, twenty-two forty-eight point one through forty-eight point zero two.
Move approval?
Second.
Most made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none motion carries. Number thirty-seven is personnel change status.
Move approval A through D?
Second.
Most made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none motion carries. Let me pull from a different package. There's, uh, number thirty-eight is payment of claims, claim to be paid by Brazos County, claim number eight one one seven four eight eight through claim number eight one one seven seven eight nine and claim number nine zero zero five, uh, seven four one through claim number nine zero zero five eight four nine.
Move approval?
Second.
Most made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none motion carries. Uh, we will skip down to forty-one is acknowledgement of quarterly investment report for QE six thirty twenty-two. Forty-two is acknowledgement of Brazos County Emergency Services District Number Three agreed upon procedure uh, for the year ended September thirty, twenty twenty-one. Forty-three is acknowledgement of FY twenty twenty-one, twenty-two budget for actuals by fund as of September fourteen, twenty twenty-two. And number forty-four Juvenile Director's Report.
Linda. Good morning again, Judge and Commissioners. We have forty-nine in detention, thirty-eight males, eleven females, and we have twenty-three on electronic monitor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Uh, forty-five Sheriff's Report on Inmate Population, Chief.
Hi, good afternoon, Judge, Commissioners. Uh, this morning, our population is six forty-two. That's five hundred forty-five males, ninety-seven females. We have sixty on electronic monitor. Six zero.
Six zero.
Six, six zero on electronic monitor with eleven pending.
Chief, Chief, may I ask one question I've never asked this before, I don't think. What is the capacity of our jail at six forty-two? Are we half capacity or are we much more than that?
Yeah, the actual total beds that we have is one thousand eighty-eight. So, and that includes like a low-risk facility.
So what they do is, uh, Commissioner, uh, there are dorms that aren't used.
Yes.
Until they're needed.
I got you.
And we have staff.
And we appreciate you all keeping us safe.
Thank you, Chief. Uh, number forty-six is announcement of interest. A big board. Yep, um, can we go back up? There was a PAF in that, uh, personnel action form that, uh, I failed to catch. Uh, it was supposed to have been deleted out of there.
Oh, it should have been deleted.
So let me, uh, make my motion, uh, to change personnel action forms A through D with the exception of, uh, Diane Hoffing.
Hoffling.
Hoffling.
And I'll second that.
Okay, there's motion made in second to remove Diane Hoffling from the PAF, uh, that had been passed.
That we already passed, so an amendment to that motion.
Okay.
So do we need to?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none motion carries.
But, okay, we voted on the amendment. We need to vote on the motion again.
Well.
Don't we?
Uh, we, we can do that and that's.
No. The motion has already passed.
It's correct.
Okay, uh, now back to the.
We voted on the amendment. Now we need to vote on the motion.
Okay.
You voted to amend the motion, now you need to vote.
Okay, the motion is to approve A through D with the removal of the PAF for Diane Hoffling.
As amended, second.
As amended.
So that one's already passed. Our, now, so will we, now we're, this is.
The motion is to, to pass the PAF with the exception of Diane Hoffling.
Okay, got a motion? And a second.
Second.
And a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none motion carries. Um, now back to announcement of interest as possible future agenda topics.
Mr. Colley, you've already asked for a workshop on, uh, the MSC polling place. Will we be able to take action at the end of that workshop?
We would have to put it on the agenda.
Okay.
To take action, but not at the end of the workshop. It would.